And tonight, we are going to start off with Putnam Kidder and the Recreation Commission to talk to us again about the Elkins Beach Swing Set. And can I also just say to the public, thank you all, everybody that submitted comments to all of the selectmen. We've had the chance, I think, to go through all of them, and we really appreciate all of the feedback.
Regarding the playgrounds?
Yes.
Yeah, wonderful. I'm going to kick us off tonight. Jackie Christensen, I'm a chair on the commission for the Recreation Department. And we met as a commission on Monday, June 23rd, to update and finalize our recommendations on how to proceed with the Elkins Swing Set project based on our latest learning. There's been a lot of learning through this whole thing. And what you have now is an updated version of the original memo. So this should be considered a replacement of the memo that we originally submitted for the June 18th Selectmen's Meeting. And, you know, what we just want to emphasize is that our ultimate goal is to have safe, durable, accessible, inclusive play areas that families can enjoy for decades to come. And this goal really aligns well with the REC's mission to promote community connection through cross-generational and inclusive recreation and leisure experiences. So it's like the second bullet point in our mission. And so during the 6/23 REC meeting, the commission voted unanimously to withdraw up to $14,400 from our existing capital reserves fund. So we currently have $37,029 in that fund, so we are asking to draw down to no less than And with those funds, we're recommending replacing the existing swing set at Elkins with an ADA-compliant swing set. In the updated memo, we do go into detail about the 20% trigger regulation. And this refers to a requirement under the ADA that applies when alterations are made to an area of primary function in an existing facility. The ADA requires an accessible path of travel to the altered area must be provided. However, the cost of these additional accessibility improvements are only required up to 20% of the original cost, of the cost of the original alteration project. And, you know, this regulation ensures accessibility improvements are made incrementally as facilities are altered without imposing an undue financial burden on the project budget. And so it kind of keeps accessibility improvements proportional to the overall cost of the project. So in our near-term recommendation of replacing the Elkins Swing Set, you'll see that we provide an alteration cost of $12,000 max, which calculates to $2,400 when you apply the 20% trigger calculation. So that's how we're landing on the total maximum cost for the project of being $14,400. And I just want to give a big thank you to Mag Francis, who has been awesome, really involved, really passionate about this project. And she brought this aspect of the ADA regulations to our attention so that we could, you know, make this recommendation. And so our near-term vision is to have that swing set that provides a comparable experience, you know, kind of feature parity, if you will, to what families have enjoyed for almost 30 years at Elkins, while also making the experience more inclusive with the bucket swing for toddlers and an accessibility swing, along with two traditional belt swings. And so in this updated version of the memo, we also include all the community feedback that you referenced that was emailed to the town administrator. So thank you again to Mag. Another shout-out for engaging the community via Facebook to bring awareness to the question that was brought up during the June 18th Selectmen's Meeting regarding playground usage at our beaches. So in addition to a whole lot of Facebook chatter, 20 different community members took the time to send in their thoughts on the importance of providing and maintaining playground equipment on the beaches. And so, you know, and I think the themes, they were really thoughtful, really engaged feedback, you know, that's, it's, the playground is a touchstone of happy memories where friendships are built, you know, it's great to hear the children playing, you know, it's, it's, it is pretty regular usage to, you know, splash around, kind of get waterlogged, go take a break on the playground, go back in the water, rinse and repeat. And then I think, you know, some folks also just brought up, you know, the, the screen time for our kids, right? And, and wanting to provide opportunities for good old-fashioned fun. And if anything, you know, this kid, this generation really needs more places to play and get their energy out that isn't in front of a screen. And so in the memo, we share our next steps in providing recommendations for the longer-term plan to upgrade aging playground equipment at both beaches. Members of the commission are meeting with Chris Martin, not from Coldplay, was the joke that Putnam made, but from UltiPlay on Tuesday, July 15th. We're going to tour both play areas. And, and actually, this came to us by way of Marilyn Goodwin Sopper, who connected us with Melissa White at Crotchit Mountain Foundation. So it's been this great, you know, kind of, you know, getting to meet people who are all engaged in this type of work. And UltiPlay is, is wonderful because they, they aren't just selling one manufacturer, right? They, they kind of represent lots of different playground equipment companies. And so they'll be able to provide us with playground designs at no cost. And also, they have guidance and tools for effective community fundraising. So like a whole online portal, you know, that we can use to, to fundraise. We can, they will also help us research and source grants, if possible, for this project. So we're not asking for any votes or decisions to be made on the longer-term plan. We're sharing this for awareness and just to ensure that the board and the community knows that the REC is working towards a holistic plan. We're still in the research phase, and, and we'll definitely be in touch and, and schedule the time to come back with, with our findings there and next steps. But we are recommending that the board votes on moving forward on getting Elkins, the Elkins Swing Set replaced in the near-term, given the strong community feedback about the value of having playground equipment at the beach and the availability of the capital reserve funding in the REC's budget. So that's what we're, we're asking for today. Questions?
Jen, have any questions? Rich?
What sort of a timeframe are we looking at?
Well, it's like, it's one of those things, right? It all depends on if we get approval today, we were to place the, you know, order for the equipment, we're hearing it could take 30, 60 days plus to, you know, actually get the equipment. And then we're also looking to work with the DPW, and so it all is dependent on their schedule as well. So like any, you know, kind of project like this, I don't want to say a, a date, but certainly for next season, you know, we want that swing set in place. I don't know, Putnam?
I think that's realistic. And, you know, we have to be just kind of depending on, we don't want to know that DPW has other projects going on, and we want to have to kind of fit into their schedule. But the company quoted 60-days delivery date, so if we ordered it soon, a couple of months from there, and then a month or two afterwards, so. But again, but hopefully, definitely by next, next summer, 2026.
My question is, will this swing set be, when you're thinking about a long-term plan, is this swing set sort of part of that, so that we're not just putting in this to get a swing set in, and then we come up with a new plan and this swing set is obsolete?
That's a great question. Absolutely. It's part of the long-term plan. So, but what we didn't want to do is wait for this entire huge project and then realize, oh, man, it's going to take us two years to fundraise, and then another year to put it in. And all the while, it's been four years since, since we've had adequate, you know, swings for, for the kids on the playground.
Okay. Because I, I think it's a great proposal, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys put into it, and, but that was just my only concern. I would hate to spend $14,000, and then two years from now, we're ripping it out because we're putting all brand-new. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that that's, this is kind of phase one of a multi-phase process. And, you know, it's great to see the work of REC Commission, the work I've been doing, and the public feedback, and people showing their, how they really appreciate this, this resource we have. So we look forward to making a plan moving forward.
Okay. All right. So can I get a motion to approve withdrawing $14,400 or up to $14,400 for whatever's necessary out of the existing capital reserve fund for playground equipment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got Chief Lion, Steve Ensign. Oh, oh, are you throwing him under the bus?
It's all good. I'm happy to start unless...
All of you?
I'd like to defer to you two. No? So, so thank you for, for having me. As far as the update is with the hiring process, we were very fortunate to have multiple applicants. The Board of Fire Wards, as well as the Standing Committee for the New London Fire Department, interviewed six individuals. Four of those individuals were currently career firefighters in other municipalities, which I, I think is phenomenal and says a lot about the Town of New London. A conditional offer has been made, and really what we're looking to do this evening, as we transition to our 24-hour staffing model, is to visit two things. And my apologies for the, the late memo to the Select Board. We were a little shorthanded today and running around on, on various calls. There's really, I think, two main things, and then there's some other intricacies that will come up over the, the process. The two main things that we're looking for is to change the work period for the Fire Department. Currently, the Town of New London's personnel policy has a 14-day, and please interrupt me if I misspeak at any point, a seven-day work period with fire and police. Based upon the FLSA 207K exemption allows police and fire to work between that seven-day and 28-day cycle. And this is a work period, not pay period. And, and sometimes I have a tendency to jump into a pay explanation, and that's really not it. So we're looking at, at a work, work period of, our recommendation is 14 days. The rationale for that, after we spoke to the Board of Fire Wards and our Town Administrator and Finance Director, was to transition to a 14-day cycle. What this allows us to do is to work varying schedules. So there's various hours that are worked. And I did provide on the second page of my memo, a calendar, so you can look at it. Whereas we have several shifts of, two, two shifts a week of 24 hours, and on Weeks 1 and 2, and then, which equates to 96 hours, as opposed to the current 80 that we're looking at. And then on Weeks 3 and 4, depending on the shift that you're working, it would either be another 96 hours or 72. This seems really complicated. It, it averages over that 28-day cycle 42 hours a week. So it's very similar to what our regular employees are being compensated. So there, there's two things at hand, the, the work period and then overtime, which I think I'd like to, to break apart. And I can explain it all together, and then you can ask questions. Or if you have any questions, by all means, I'm happy to, to jump in. Did I miss anything? Okay. And so overtime, currently employees after 40 hours receive overtime. And although this is certainly a slightly modified model from some fire departments, we feel that this is the best model for ours, based upon hours worked. The difference is, currently, if an employee works over 80 hours in a two-week, two-work periods, it coincides with the pay period of every two weeks our finance directors compensating our employees. And so what this would mean would be that our firefighters are working on Week 1, 48 hours, 48 hours for a cumulative 96 hours. They would not receive overtime unless they come back for a call. So hours worked, hours scheduled, is what it is. So whether it be the 96 on Weeks 1 and 2, and this is slightly confusing, and that's the reason why I gave, gave you a calendar to, to reference, on, on Weeks 1 and 2, we're working 96 hours. An employee may work another 96 hours the following week, but there's one employee that may work 72. But it averages out, again, over that four-week work, it would be two work period, cycles. And so our recommendation is that if employees aren't scheduled and they come back for a building fire, let's say they work a 96, and they work a 96, they would then get, I mean, in total, for, for a work period, if they worked a 96, and then on a, on a Saturday night, so they worked Monday, Wednesday, a Tuesday, Thursday, and they came back on a Saturday night for a building fire for four hours, then the four hours would be considered overtime. And so Lynn and I have been chatting about this for probably a couple, six weeks, maybe more. It's been, it's been a bit to, to try to figure this out, what would be the best for the Town of New London, and also take care of the employees.
This is all resolved with, with Lynn and Town Administrator at 11:45 this morning, which is the end of our most recent meeting, which is why I have a memo with this after.
Right. So when we talked with the Department of Labor, when we did the Zoom call?
Yes.
Do you feel more comfortable with her explanation of how we have to do this?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, there were questions about it.
So, so we had multiple questions, and we've spoke to multiple representatives from the U.S. Department of Labor. We've talked to the State Department of Labor for New Hampshire. We've also talked to the New Hampshire State Retirement System. So I, I think that in total, there's been five DOL conversations that we've had. And, and so one of the biggest anomalies was if an employee works a set period, they need to be compensated for that, that period. Now, there are exemptions for various fire departments, and other fire departments use different schedules. I think that what Lynn and I chatted about makes sense for, and, and Steve and Ashley, when we, when we talked, this makes the most amount of sense from a validation of time worked. So although this slightly differs, again, from some fire departments and what they're, how they, they manage their payroll, this is an accurate way to compensate employees with still protecting the Town of New London and, and taking care of the employees ultimately.
Have you discussed this with current staff?
Yes.
Because Andrew probably won't have as much overtime as he does now. Is that correct?
So it, so the, the overtime that individuals receive is based upon when the call happens.
Right.
And the difficult thing is, we don't know when the calls are going to take place. So we, we don't know for a fact what that looks like. And, and there's certainly some overtime considerations when it comes to holidays, but as far as callback, we just don't know. So it's a, it's a guesstimate. So when I look at Andrew's past overtime, it, it varies in a two-week, at this time, two-week pay period, or, yes, work period, that there, there are times that it's as few as seven hours and as many as 24.
And when they're called back, what is the minimum amount they're paid for? Even if they're called back for only a half an hour, they're still paid a certain amount, correct?
They are. Our, our association voted to not follow what the Town of New London is recommending. So ours is slightly more conservative than what the town provides. So right now, it would be an hour for a callback. My recommendation is at least two hours in the hours of, from midnight and 6:00. And the rationale for that is if I'm, if I respond to a call right now to a motor vehicle accident, not that we had one at the, near the roundabout today, but that, that's going to chew up an hour of my time. If I respond from home at night, I've got to get up, get dressed, respond to the incident, come home, maybe take a shower, or whatever the case may be, and you're, you're awake, it's more inconvenient. And again, we, the whole aspect of overtime, I think, is important from an incentivification standpoint in getting people back. And when we look at, and, and I can follow up by the, the strategic plan for future staffing, but when we look at the statistics of where people live, where people work, there's, there's certainly some concerns, but that's the reason why we have a greater number of individuals that we can rely on to come back and mitigate whatever the emergency is.
It might be helpful to tell everyone how many people actually live in town that are volunteer firefighters.
So currently, we have 43 firefighters on the force, and out of those 43, 18 live in town. Now, we've had conversations about other communities. Most communities have 98% of their members living in town. For us, we have 18 out of the 43, so 27, 5 something, thank you, are, are outside the Town of New London. And, and in comparison, you've heard me say this before, in '87, we had 34 members, 34 people lived in town, 30 of those individuals worked in town. So there's been this swing for outside residency. Many individuals grew up in the Town of New London, joined the Fire Department, and when they bought their own homes, they bought it in the surrounding communities. And now we're finding even more difficulties in those surrounding communities from a, from a cost standpoint and what people can afford. So even for the Board of Fire Wards moving forward, looking at, it's always been a contiguous town to New London, we may potentially consider distance. And is Andover or Grantham, or where can we, we pull our resources from? So.
Can I ask Chief, the motto that you've laid out here, is that, that's based on the proposed staff levels of going up to four total full-time firefighters?
That is correct. So what this, and you can see it on your schedule, what this allows us to do is to cover four days in a row, and then have four days off. Those four, four days off. Those, those four days that we don't have staffing at the station, we'd either use per diem or on-call, our on-call officers. What this means is, an on-call officer that has been consistently working, and I'll use Jeff Daly, our, our fire captain, he's been on-call for the last 10 years, every Monday night. What this will allow him to do is to have four Mondays off, and then four Mondays, he'll be on-call. As we transition, when and if, to additional people, we'll still need an on-call system, we'll still need per diem people, because you really need five to cover. It doesn't make sense to me to have a fifth person just floating for the, the standpoint of covering vacation or, or sick time. And I, I see a benefit in participation levels from our call folks, our part-time employees, to backfill those full-time spots. So I, I think that, at this point, we're really looking for the four to cover 24 hours a day. But moving forward, I think that we'll be able to backfill those, those vacancies when they're on vacation, or whatever the case may be.
Can, can you tell us, Chief, by adding a fourth person to the Fire Department right now, will we be saving money on per diem costs or overtime?
We did. We reduced the amount of funds that were requested for this year. The difficult thing is, we've also increased the compensation for those people that are on-call, and in order to help incentivize, because really, this is, when we look, and again, to, to, to back up a little bit, the Strategic Plan for Future Staffing Models was submitted to the Board of Fire Wards for their review. And as soon as I gather all their comments, that will hopefully be in the next couple of weeks, that that's distributed to the board and the general public for, for their review. And what's interesting is, when you look at the Town of New London compared to equitable departments, Meredith and Alton, Northwood, the number of full-time people that we have, and we're doing okay, we're treading water, providing services, is significantly less than all the other departments out there that have similar calls and also similar populations. So, yeah, moving forward, I do see a benefit of, of hiring for those two other positions. And, and we contemplated moving Captain Mathie into the, the cycle, or you've heard me talk about, you know, the, the availability of the Fire Chief. What does that look like moving forward? And so as I come to the completion of my tenure, we, we have chatted about this before, the, the three things I'm really focused on is staffing levels, apparatus replacement, and then when the ladder truck gets replaced, that's the next piece to be replaced in six years, where are we going to be able to put that? So.
I have a question on the, you, the way you described this, these two employees will be working these shifts, the 96 hours, I, I've got all of that.
Yep.
You mentioned that if they get called back, then they will be paid overtime?
Yes.
That's when they'll be paid overtime?
Yes.
So what rate do these full-time employees get paid for their callbacks? Do they get paid the same rate as our volunteer firefighters that...
They don't. It's at a higher rate.
It's at a higher rate.
The, the full-time individuals, and the reason why they have a higher rate is the level of training and certification and credentialing. So for full-time people, we need to have a minimum of Level 2, they need to have their EMT. There's various certifications that we need from the CPAT in order to even be in the state retirement system. And for any of our part-time employees, we do pay based upon level of certification, but it's not at the same rate.
Okay.
And that was something that we've chatted about. In the past, we used to say, well, no one joins the Fire Department because of the money. And what's interesting is, now we're finding sort of a, a trend that, yes, there is a compensation. The Fire Department put out a study, basically a survey monkey, to, to find out why people weren't responding. Was it a compensation? Was it family obligations? Was it time of day? Like, what was the rationale? And how can we, as employers, take care of those part-time employees that are so, so important as we move forth?
Okay.
Lynn, you were pretty clear today on the overtime issue.
Oh, Steve Ensign, I guess I am on the list. So when we talked today, you were very clear that 96 hours in the first two-week period, overtime after the 96, 72 in the next two-week period, overtime after that. But overtime is calculated, you have to use the number. You, you can't have a different...
Right. It's, it's at time and a half of their current salary.
Correct. So there's, there's no choice about that.
Correct.
That, that's law. Okay.
Right.
And certainly, the, the 7K, so it's a 207K exemption, and then there's the 13K, which talks about overtime. In the past, municipalities were very, very short on personnel, and so they had firefighters basically living at the station. And so there is a, the federal law does allow for municipalities to not pay overtime up to 212 hours in a, in a 28-day... up to two-hundred-and-twelve hours in a, in a twenty-eight-day period in an effort to not, for all intensive purposes, bankrupt the municipality. What I would recommend and what seems to be palatable to our finance director and, and our town administrator is to pay overtime for time that's not scheduled. If you're scheduled to work, even if you're working significantly more in a two-week period than other employees, you're still not going to get overtime until it's after your normal working scheduled time.
You know, it might be nice to talk about the qualifications of the person that you're hiring. Are they EMTs? How many years have they had? That sort of thing.
So for us, the conditional offer, and it's public, was Brandon Adams. Brandon is a resident of the town of New London. Recently purchased a home with his wife, who's a local nurse off of Balsam Acres. His daughter just graduated from fifth grade, going into middle school. Brandon formerly was an employee for the New Hampshire Retirement System. So worked in Concord and ended up transitioning into the fire service because I think when the firefighters were going down, they talked about how great their twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five-year careers were when he was down there. So he ended up transitioning to the Franklin Fire Department. He was there for several years and currently is employed by the Hanover Fire Department. And so, one of the advantages for us is to have an individual that is highly skilled, highly educated, and is able to bring his plethora of knowledge to our organization and live in town. And so, he brings fire officer, fire level three. So there's Level One, Level Two, that's the minimum. He has his Level Three certification. For EMTs, there's the EMR, which is the, basically a first responder. There's the EMT, which Mike and I are EMTs. And then there's the advanced, so he's able to administer IVs. So if New London ambulance is up in DHMC doing a transfer and the other ambulance is working, incident down in Sutton, we're able to establish IVs. Andrew Sarnovitz also recently passed that certification. But Brandon's been advanced, I think, for six years. And so, there's a bunch of leadership classes that he's taken. I'm, I'm pretty excited, not only for having a qualified employee, but an individual too that's excited to train our call members in, in participation. And, and I know that sometimes people think, oh, that big, somewhat-looking school bus just drove by. The training is so, so important. And again, not to, not to look at the strategic plan, what's interesting to me is, when we go back from a longevity standpoint, in two thousand, out of our forty-three members that we have today, we had eighteen people that are still in the department that were here in, in two thousand twenty, excuse me. In two thousand fifteen, out of forty-one people, we have eight people. In two thou, so that would be, in fifteen years ago, we had seven people out of forty-one. And twenty years ago, there are only two of us that are left from a longevity standpoint. And so from an institutional knowledge, how do we train our individuals? And it's, it's a constant battle. And, and one of the, from a preparedness to training standpoint, that is one of the most important things for our full-time firefighters to do is to be able to train individuals, to bring them up in order to provide services to the townspeople. So he's got a plethora of knowledge.
Good, good. No, no, I'm finished.
Can I ask, in terms of, we just bumped the overnight stipend, correct? And it's now up to ninety dollars a night, is that right?
That is correct. So we're paying seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So we're paying basically minimum wage for someone to be on-call.
And in terms of, if we have a per diem officer on, on the weekend, I'm sorry, just someone on the weekend, how much do we pay for that?
So that, instead of a twelve-hour, that would be a twenty-four-hour, so that would be a hundred and eighty dollars.
And so do we, do we pay that both for Saturday and Sunday then, for?
So it'd be, yep. So let's say, I'm the on-call officer this weekend, I'm working a Friday. I would get compensated the ninety dollars for the Friday into Saturday morning. And then if I do the two additional shifts, those twenty-four-hour shifts, I would receive a hundred and eighty dollars per shift until I am relieved at seven AM on, on Monday morning. We do have money in the budget too for per diem, we did decrease that amount. One of our considerations was to cover a greater amount of time. And when we're looking at the budget, our former chair of the Select Board asked every department to take a look at that. And so that was reduced, and as well as our part-time line item was reduced in order to assist with hiring the current position that we just gave a conditional offer for.
And overall, I, I apologize, I don't recollect. How much did we bump up the fire department budget from last year to this year that we just started? Percentage-wise, do you know?
It, it was, it was a higher percentage just because, every firefighter is fourteen-point-eight percent. I mean, firefighters, a hundred and eight thousand dollars between compensation, healthcare, retirement, and that doesn't include overtime. So your investment is significant.
So Lynn, can you tell us how much it bumped up?
I don't see my summary in here, so.
I might have it.
Give me a second. I just want to ask Ashley and Lynn for their feedback on all of this. You were all in conversations this morning.
Yeah, I think, first and foremost, I really want to commend Chief and Lynn for working together for the past six or seven weeks. This is a very new and very unique scenario, and they have worked through it together beautifully, and I really commend them for that. I am on board with Chief Lyon's plan. The one thing that is still sort of an open question is the personnel policy. And we did talk a little bit about that this morning. So Lynn and I need to get together and just take a look at the policy. And I've asked Chief to hold off on solidifying a start date for the new firefighter until we can put our heads together. There's a good chance that we're going to need to work with all the department heads to revamp the personnel policy, which is okay. But that's going to take some time, especially, I mean, we've already got three people out all next week. It's summer, things are busy. So we need to put our heads together there. We'll do that in the next few days or next week, and then go from there and keep everybody informed. So I'm feeling very good about the outcome, but Lynn.
Twenty-four percent, that was the answer to your question, the increase in the fire. But that's because of the, the salary, we added a salary, that makes a difference. Yeah, I think this solution of going to a fourteen-day work period is a little more elegant than what I think other surrounding departments are doing. It allows us to have them work up to a hundred and six hours without overtime, but I think the ninety-six, ninety-six is reasonable. And then the following week, you know, the seventy-two hours. And it, it doesn't hurt the employee because they're, they're, yes, they're getting a little more the first two weeks, so their schedule, a little less the second two weeks. But I think it, it's, it's reasonable to do.
So the change in the personnel policy would be a fourteen-day work period only for the fire department?
That's not, that, that doesn't have to be part of the policy because the exceptions are, are done for the 207 K. So all, you guys would have to agree that the fire department would go to a fourteen-day work period. The personnel policy that we have to look at is, for example, if, if someone calls out sick on their schedule, that's twenty-four hours. They get fifty-six hours of sick time. So they've just blown through, by calling out one, one scheduled shift, they've blown through about half of their sick time. But the other side of that is, okay, if they're out for a whole week, they're only using two shifts, whereas an employee is using four. There's just a lot to talk about, and that may end up being an amendment to our personnel policy or, you know, but that's, has to be kind of solidified a little, how the, how sick and leave time would work.
So what do you need us to do?
I think for right now, what we need to do is approve the fourteen-day work period. The work period and pay period are different. So that's why all, all three of us are being very cognizant about saying work period. So we need to approve that fourteen-day work period. For the fire department, yes.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes.
Strictly a change for the fire department, not any of the other towns.
Correct.
But just from a clarification standpoint, the, the police department currently is on a fourteen.
Oh, okay, so this is sort of adding to something that's already there. Okay. All right, are we ready?
Sure.
Can I have a motion, please, to approve the fourteen-day work period change to the fire department's scheduling?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, here you go.
Thank you. And again, hopefully we'll get some, the strategic plan out to everyone shortly. I know that with the holidays and some intricacies with our, our board members, we're still waiting for your feedback. Yes, the, the twenty-first would be the next Board of Firewoods meeting.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks Lynn, thanks Ashley, all you guys working together on this, appreciate it. Okay, next, public comments. Does anybody have any public comments and anything not on the agenda tonight? No?
Mag Francis, quick question. So strategic planning appears to be the thought of the month, year, whatever. So my question to the REC department, I know you all started thinking about a bigger-picture plan for the two recreational facilities slash beaches. And you talked about Phase Two as it relates to the playground. How does that bigger picture fit into what you all are going to do over the next six months? Both from an accessibility perspective as well as an improvement perspective? I mean, the playground is one piece, right, of a bigger picture.
Yeah, I think that this would be the start of getting us in usable swing and then starting to look at the two structures at both beaches and thinking about getting them updated and as they are all getting older and trying to get, as we move forward, having them have the same level of accessibility in renovations or updates and alterations that we need to moving forward. So this is the Phase One to address the most pressing issue, which is the swings. And then the next phases would be looking at, hopefully with the help of the Utila, Utila Play folks, Ulti Play, I almost say it the other way, to be able to kind of map out a step-by-step plan. And I think it's also, we're going to prevent, provide options to be able to look at what we want to have those, a few different options to be able to look at next steps for that.
I did not do a good job with my question, so I'm going to try to rephrase it. The playgrounds are a piece of both recreational facilities. The facilities themselves are bigger than just the playgrounds. So we have accessibility issues. We have, what is each facility good at? They're very, very, very different geographies, they're not the same, and they don't need to be the same, okay? But there needs to be a bigger strategic plan that encompasses a lot of stuff. Which also, go ahead, and I know you guys are thinking about it, because I saw the wheels turning.
Well, no, and, and I think, Mag, you attended our last Recreation Commission meeting and brought up the same question. And, you know, I did not, I wanted to keep this conversation and this memo within the scope of the playground and not balloon it into something even bigger, right? Because just fixing both playgrounds is a big undertaking that will require fundraising likely and, and a whole budget cycle conversation. I do think, you know, there is an opportunity for us to also look at the other facilities, the sheds, you know, that might need painting, you know, and looking at, you know, accessibility down to the water. But that's not something that we have researched or, you know, have a plan yet for. So I think, you know. I don't know, I mean, I think, I don't know if that's something that has, so far, as, as my time on the commission, we've been focused on operationalizing, like, how we do our events, right? How do we do committees and volunteer engagement and, you know, staffing for the beaches? And, you know, now the playground is the thing that we're focused on. So it's, it's not something that frankly has come up until now for us to put emphasis on. But, you know, it's a great point, and it is something that, you know, we should, we should put on the list. But I, I don't have a timeline at all because it's a kind of new thing that has, has arisen.
I'll, I'll just kind of follow up on that. Like, this hopefully is going to be opening the door to enable us to look at our facilities more broadly and to be able to hopefully make longer-range planning and budgeting options and kind of scenarios moving forward. So I think it would be a good opportunity for us to really start looking long-range at what we're going to need to do and take it step by step. Does that answer the question?
I think just one other thing to note. Putnam and I met the other day specifically about programming and what the next few months, actually, longer than the next few months, really, the next six to eight months. And he is going to come to the next Select Board meeting and share those ideas. There are several on there that I am absolutely thrilled about, very excited about. So I'm hoping that everybody else will be as well, but that's also being worked on.
Question about the, and I know the scientific, this cyanoblooms. Is there any way that we have an alert system to tell the town or those residents that the beaches are closed like they were, I think it was yesterday, or today? Do we have a system like that? I know the Water Department sends out alerts when there's an issue on Main Street or when there's a lost dog. And I wonder, do we have that capability? And if not, could we implement that?
So we have been seeing, over the last three summers, consistently more cyanobacteria issues at both beaches. This summer unfortunately seems to be more, a higher number in a shorter time period than we've seen so far in my time here. So we work with the Health Officer and we work with the Pleasant Lake Protective Association, the Little Lake Protective Association, and the REC department to try to get out information that we have of when there's a sighting. And when there's a sighting, there needs to be a sample taken, and then the sample needs to be analyzed. And then DES gives us a recommendation as to next steps. So we've been doing our best since this has been happening to always be very open with the information we have, whether it's on, on our beach or on the larger lake area, and share that information with people and work closely with DES to try to educate everybody on what this stuff is and its potential health impacts. We haven't closed the beaches, we, we don't close the beaches, but we give people information. And I can understand that people see the placards with warnings and they kind of see that as that being closed. We're not saying that the beaches are closed, but we are saying that DES says if there are blooms present, to not swim near them. And the tricky part of the blooms is that they can come up and then they can go away, and then they can come up and go away. So given the population that we have at the beaches of all ages, of, you know, everyone from infants all the way up. all the way up and younger people, smaller, younger people are can be more susceptible to cyanobacteria health issues, I always want to err on the side of caution to give the parents the information that there has been a sighting or there has been a sample taken because everyone has a different comfort level around this. So I've
You're posting it because you're putting it on the website.
Yep. So putting it on. Yep, I put it on our website, updated, and I put it at the beaches, placards standing up at the beaches. And then I put it on our web, social media, and we share that to the New London community Facebook page and in the London residents' Facebook page. PL, no, Little Lakes Septic Protective Association, they also spread it as well, and the PLPA spreads it as well. Meeting with them hopefully next week, representatives from both of those groups to try to get together exactly so the messengers are exactly the same and also that our timing is exactly the same because sometimes different, a sample will get taken and I don't know that the sample's been taken and it'll be analyzed and all of a sudden DES will say something that, oh, this this has been found on the beach or near the beach and I didn't hear about it at all. Our staff is trained to be aware of this and they actually saw the one on Monday and reported it to me. So they know just what to look for and they know our policy to send me a picture and then we'll come down and we'll deal with it and then we'll get signs up. And they've done a really good job of relaying information to people as to what's going on. I think with the staff, when there are blooms present, I don't think it makes very much sense for us to have lifeguards on there because we're kind of not, we we, if DES says don't go in the water when there are blooms present and we have lifeguards there, that could be construed to say we're kind of encouraging people to swim. So it's a tough area, but I want to err on the side of caution in giving people information. We're going to continue to figure out the best way we can get out this information to people because it does seem to be more common.
I was just going to say, yeah, you can sign up for alerts with DES as well. They have a great interactive map of New Hampshire.
They have a map that will show you where are their reports. And the problem is the map isn't always exactly in real time. As these reports are made, the reports, samples need to be taken, DES needs to analyze the samples. So it doesn't always reflect exactly what's happening, but that's a really good resource, the healthy swimming map.
Do we have a system where we can alert people by text? Because some people don't get on their internet to check the website.
But you have to sign up for that system.
Yeah, you still have to sign up for that.
You still have to sign up for that system with new, with like with the water sewer system.
Right. So is there any way we could alert people to sign up for that system so that we could alert them? Because yesterday there was, there was, you can come up, yesterday there was blooms and they did close.
Yeah. But, right, well, posted, they posted.
So it was on Monday, blooms were spotted. We did not close the beach.
Right.
We put out information that we had active blooms and we were discouraging people from swimming. And we were also pulling the staff to the other beach to discourage people from swimming. Again, this beach wasn't closed, but I agree that if there's a more efficient way to get as much information out there as possible, I say we explore it.
I do. But I think, I think, John, we're we're covered because if somebody goes to the beach, they're going to see the signs. Do you know what I mean?
I understand that.
It saves a trip for somebody to drive all the way to the beach.
Correct.
But when they get to the beach, the posting is there.
No, I understand that.
Okay. Go ahead, Jay.
Jayline. So the town of New London did have a code red system that we were able to push out notifications to Mr. Ellis's point when things happened in town, whether it be a hazardous material spill when we wanted people to shelter in place, or if there was a subject holed up in a in a building and we wanted to notify the the general vicinity. We chose to not continue that service because of the cost that was incurred. And I and I don't want to misspeak, but I believe it was right around $10,000. And the reason why we discontinued that service was the state of New Hampshire through the Genesis program provides reverse 911. So if if event happens where a propane truck rolls over on 89, we can have a circumference around that area and evacuate forest acres or or whatever the general vicinity that is affected. However, we can only use that system for emergencies, not necessarily notifications or town meeting is going to be delayed because of a snowstorm or whatever the case may be. And that's what they were using the code code red for. The other concern from public official standpoint is we could push out so many notifications that when there's actually an emergency, then people, because we've pushed out so much. So I do think that there's probably good ways to look at it. The town did have it and we chose from a fiscal responsibility standpoint not to continue that service just because of the cost that was involved and there was a duplicate system.
Yeah, I think just to add on to that briefly, I've managed these systems in the in my past lives. It's pretty cumbersome. I would imagine that we'd have to bring someone on staff just to manage that. There's a lot of back and forth of people saying, I didn't sign up for this, but they did. But everyone would have to opt in to receive any text messages.
Yeah, I got it. It's not doable. The next question I have is, when could we get an inventory of equipment, boats, et cetera, that the rec department has that is not in use or could be sold or removed from the storage units that seem to be full of stuff that's not being used? And maybe we could auction it off or get some money to put in the swing set?
Yeah, I think we can, we have, yeah, I think that's a great thing to think moving forward, inventory of what we have. And I think that's definitely something to think about. I can definitely still write a list for that for future.
See you in July.
I can do that in July.
Putnam, I've got one more question. When when you're posting one of the beaches because of the blooms and those lifeguards that were supposed to be working that day on that beach aren't going to be able to work on that beach, where are they, where are they going and what are they doing?
They, yesterday, we brought them to the other beach. So it's not ideal, but it does give the kids consistent hours. So it's, I think that if we had to have long range time where we were going to be impacted, then we would need to think about other options. But hopefully we'll be okay. But it's definitely something we're learning about all the time and I encourage everyone to get educated about it. The DES website is great. And on there you can sign up to get the emails, the notifications, and you also can look at the map. But it does seem like it is something that is around and seems to be a little more persistent than it has in past summers. But I think it's really important for people to get educated.
Putnam, before you sit down, if you don't mind, off topic from the that issue, but can I just ask, just so that I know, do we have it as a policy that anyone working at the beaches, our lifeguards, et cetera, that there's no phone usage while they're working?
Yeah, they they, if they're on break, if they're on their lunch break, they can use their phones. They never, ever, ever use their phones in the stands, that they be, know that they could be fired for that. But that if they're on their lunch break or if they need to make a quick phone usage, they need to go in the guardhouse and then they can be done with that.
Thank you.
Okay. And I just wanted to make one quick public comment for anybody who's been following the Mount Sunape Septic Lagoons. Commissioner Stewart issued her guidance to Mount Sunape Resort about their operating plan on Monday. I highly recommend finding that letter and reading through it. She strongly recommended to them that they consider replacing that septic lagoon. She can't require it, but she pretty much said it's a moral issue and you should really strongly consider it. And she did talk about the state helping out, trying to find some grant money to do that work. And we're going to be drafting up a letter and sending it off to her as thanking her and and offering our support to continue to collaborate on that very important issue. Okay, next, new business, dog registrations. Will's favorite thing.
I love dogs. Dog owners. So basically, a quick snapshot of what happens with dogs is we send out a letter in February saying, your dog needs to get registered, so please do so by April 30. Then April 30 rolls around and we have 300 people that still have not registered their dogs, at which point we begin calling each of them to remind them about this. Diane calls them once, I call them once. And at this point, you have the list in front of you that is remaining. There's about forty something, high forties dogs remaining. So what happens now is you sign a warrant, which allows me to send out a letter saying we have done a $25 forfeiture fee on the dogs, which adds $25 to the cost of your $2 dog potentially. So. Sorry. I'll wait. So anyway, there's a list of names with forty, forty-one to forty-three people on it or so that have not paid for their dogs. So what you do tonight is you sign a warrant and that adds $25. I send them a letter on the eighth. They have 15 days to pay that. If they don't, then I come back and with the list of people that still haven't paid and you guys decide if you would like to take the dogs or take them to court and send a police officer to their house. And this is over a $2 dog license, by the way, which we, I, you know, the the books would show that we make some money on it, but I assure you, we do not on dogs.
No, it's $2, but we only get 50 cents.
Right.
The state gets the rest. So for 50 cents, he's going through all this aggravation.
Yeah. And I have to because of the RSAs. And there's no option to say no. We have so far said no to registering cats, however, so that's a plus, because that's a whole another carnival that I don't want to get involved in.
I'm sorry, how many dogs do we have in town?
Let's say 880-ish.
So we're looking at a cool 400-plus dollars.
Well, but some of some of them, sixty-five plus is a $2 license, a unaltered dog is a $9 license. So it ranges between the two of those. So there are some where we make a little bit more. So that's where we're, that's the story on dogs. So the moral of the story is if people could please pay their dogs on time, it would really help the town out in terms of cost of money and aggravation and all of that stuff. And it's a really simple thing. And, you know, if a dog moves out of town or something else happens to the dog, if you let us know, that would be wonderful. And then we don't have to go through this whole process, but it's painful.
Because it used to be, did it used to be that the veterinarians would notify the towns when a dog passed away?
No, actually, this is another fascinating part of this. We get notifications when they get rabies shots and that sort of stuff. And when a dog dies, we hear crickets, which they've already got the system set up to tell us things, but they don't tell us when a dog dies. So
Will and I have talked about this and I think we'll try to remedy this of trying to get some reports from the area vets.
Yeah, because that's tough. I can imagine when you're making those phone calls and
It's an awful thing to call somebody whose dog has passed away nine months ago and you feel like an idiot calling them. So. But there's no way for us to know besides that. So that's, that's where we're at. So if you could sign that warrant, that will move that process forward. So thank you.
All right.
And glad you're out of the sun now.
All right, next, Lynn's going to talk to us about the capital reserve movement.
Yes, I am. So I'd like to talk about it just individual and have you just, I guess, vote each time. I'm looking to remove or to ask you to authorize spending from several different capital reserve funds. One of them is the computer maintenance and replacement capital reserve. I've been working with VC3, our IT company, very closely over the last few months of what has to be replaced because a lot of our stuff doesn't support Windows 11. So come October, they're not going to be functional. There are also some other things that are just end of life. We are going to upgrade those that can be upgraded for Windows 11. But again, there's a lot of end of life and it's starting to show. I know Will and I were comparing notes. Mine's asthmatic right now. His sounds horrible. So it's just a matter of time. The server itself that's in the Academy building that houses a lot of our programs, that is well beyond end of life. And I'm talking, we've probably used it twice as long as we should. And that makes us nervous, makes VC3 nervous. So I'd like to be able to to get them to start that replacement process and also replacing computers that don't handle the Windows 11 and other, you know, end of life things. I originally put up there, 30,98185 was the estimate from VC3. Now, that could go up a bit depending they're going to order them, but depending when we get them and if costs change. But there is a laptop that I have to add, or no, a desktop that I have to add to that that I found at the police department that needs to be replaced. So the overall ask is right now for 31,981 and I'll come back if that's different, if it's more or less. But I just need the authorization that I can take that money so that I can get the order started and get these these laptops and computers in. There's also a little bit of a deadline because VC3 is moving to a different model. So right now, if we order all of these, they will get them, they will do whatever they have to do to them, bring them here, get them all up and running with no labor cost to us. The new model that we're going to be looking at a contract in the fall, we will pay the labor to have these all set and ready to go. So it's a cost saver for us to do it now, not to mention that they won't be working after October. So the the server is looking at about $18,390. The computers, and it's a mix of of laptops and and desktops, is actually $13,591. I've added that thousand for the desktop. And I think that covers what I wanted to talk about on that. However, oh, the current fund balance is 78,556 and we we were putting money into it. Mike Williams had set it up just for a server replacement. We're obviously able to do that a little bit less than what is anticipated. So we can do the computers out of it rather than the operating fund. I'm also going to be working with VC3 over the next several years of getting things into the cloud. And it takes a while because you have to, you have to look at each of the programs and are the programs cloud capable? Or do we have to move to something else? Or can we, you know, move everything but one program and just have a smaller service? So that's the stuff that I'm going to be working with them over the next couple of years to to manage and take care of. But I also would recommend when we go into budget season is to consider starting to put money into this account again because computers, they have a finite life. So we'll be replacing them. This should take us through probably 2028, but then we'll have to start replacing others.
So I'm going to ask this question because I anticipate it will come from the audience. Do we have a inventory of all of the laptops and desktops that all the employees have? And are they on some kind of a replacement plan?
Yes. And these are all the ones that have hit this year and and next year.
You knew this was coming.
Yes. I've known for several months that this was coming. I knew that the capital reserve was going to be able to handle it. And we've worked with, like I said, VC3. We have an extensive inventory of what everybody owns. But I also did go out and ask people, let me know what you have. Because we do have, like, Kim had a laptop that was no longer being used. So but that was on the list for replacement. So we removed that. Bob Harrington had a laptop that we're not replacing, obviously. Sam had gotten a newer one when he he took over. So we did go through it and carefully worked on that. So that's the ask from that particular capital reserve.
Can I ask, the old equipment, what will we be doing with it?
That's a very good question. Probably destroying it. Sam will take it and smash it. Do you want to open a room? We can all go in with sledgehammers and, but they're going to be useless because they can't be upgraded. So if there's any that are, that can be upgraded, he's going to do that and we're going to hold them in reserve for if we have another employee or someone needs a workstation. We'll hold on to those, but anything that is at end of life and can't be upgraded, we'll remove the hard drive and get rid of it.
Are we voting individually?
That's up to you. You can vote individually or you can just say, yeah, let Lynn have all the money.
Can I have a motion to withdraw 30,000?
Thirty-one.
31,981.
Yeah.
98185 from the computer maintenance and replacement capital reserve fund.
So moved.
Can I ask one last question?
Yeah.
Lynn, in terms of, if that does come in higher, if we give you the 30,981 right now, you'll still be okay even if it is going to go higher than that, correct?
I'll still get them all ordered and when I'll still get them all ordered, and when they come in, I'll come back to you for the additional monies to be withdrawn.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Next.
These are all budget, the next ones were all talked about during budget.
Right, these were all talked about during budget. They were opted not to put in the, as a warrant article. So although, actually, the first one was not put in as a warrant article, so I need you as agents to expend to authorize the $13,866 for the purchase of a zero-turn mower. And then the other item on this coming out of the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund is we purchased a transfer station truck back in the fall. We talked about places that we could possibly fund that cost. And as you can see from the breakout there, it's $18,597.25 was used, ARPA funds were used towards it. We're going to be removing or withdrawing $32,000 from the recycling revolving account, and that money comes in when people get rid of their laptops, TVs. There's a cost involved, and then some of the recycling that Sam sends out. So that builds up the account. So right now, there's enough to take $32,000 out of it to help with that cost. And so I'm just looking for $19,279.75 from the capital reserve. The current balance in that capital reserve is 754. We'll end up with 721 after the two asks that I have.
Okay, any questions? Nope. I have a motion to withdraw $33,145.91 from the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sewer Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, this is the same thing. It was brought up during budget time. We're going to purchase a Ford F-350 for the sewer department. Again, it was not put on as a warrant article, so as agents to expend, we're asking for $72,624 to come from that capital reserve. Current fund balance is 163. We'll be left with 91 after withdrawal.
Okay. Questions?
I think the selectmen could, Bill had said we didn't really want to put it on there. I'm not sure the rationale behind not including it as a warrant article. He thought this might be a faster way to do it. I'm not sure. I can't really answer that question.
I don't remember either. We can get back to you on that. Go back to the minutes, I guess.
We can.
Yeah. Probably because we are agents to expend from the fund.
I think that was the rationale, is you're agents to expend. Why are we putting it on the warrant article every year, just but?
It's certainly worth the conversation going forward on each one of these things. Yep. Okay, can I have a motion to withdraw $72,624 from the Sewer Equipment Capital Reserve Fund? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last on the list is the Cemetery Capital Reserve. And if you remember from fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26, we removed the maintenance and repair items from the operating budget. So, and then we would just fund it from the capital reserve, because we hadn't been really hitting the capital reserve. So I'm requesting $8,868.77. That represents the amount spent on cemetery repairs and maintenance in fiscal year '25. One bill was for $8,400. There were a whole bunch of other bills for like $468. So. So that's, right now, we have $98,000. We'll be left with $89,000. And then I'll be asking again at the end of next year for anything that we use it for, for '26.
Okay, I remember this one.
Yeah.
And the reason was, because when the fence was destroyed, we didn't have the money.
And we didn't have the ability to expend from the capital reserve.
Right, you were not agents to expend.
We wanted to make it so when that happens, something, a tree falls on a fence like that, that we can repair it and not have to go to town.
Right.
Yeah, go to town meeting and ask for permission.
Why couldn't we allocate, like, I'm not calling, when the fence was damaged, why couldn't we do that?
When the fund was initially established, it was established for the use of cemetery repairs and maintenance, but they were, the select board was not set as agents to expend. So you had to go to town meeting every time you wanted money.
Out of that reserve fund.
So we set.
We just went through a whole review of all of our reserve funds and figuring out which ones were, where we were agents to expend and which ones we weren't. And we, and we didn't make all of them. We didn't go through all of them. We left some alone. But this one seemed like kind of a no-brainer. It had $100,000 in it, and it was just a $15,000 repair or something. We couldn't even pull the money out. Yeah, and the fence sat there, broken. Yeah. Okay, so can I have a motion to withdraw $8,868.77 from the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lynn. Okay, Town Administrator Report, Ashley.
Hello, so I am on day two of flying solo. It has been a wonderful, oh, okay. And there's, there's my cue to leave. It has been a really wonderful month. I appreciate Kim and the work that she did to transition things over to me. What's going on now? We've, it is early July. We have several folks, department heads, that will be out on vacation over the next few weeks. Two of them out, two or three of them out next week, so coverage might be a little light. We, I've talked to both of them today, just in preparation for their time out. They are set up, they have backup, and they are available should any emergencies happen. We, I am starting to talk to department heads to wrap my head and arms around what are the current priorities that they are all working on. I think I've got a good handle on things, but I just don't, I want to make sure that I'm not missing anything. So we're talking about that. And then one of the topics that I am trying to understand is just capacity levels for all of our employees. And, you know, where are they all at their capacity level? I think we've got a lot of folks that are doing a lot of work, which is wonderful, but I want to make sure that as we continue to move forward and say yes to things, that we take into consideration capacity. And that's not to say that we would ever say no, but it's just the timing around how we would, how we would handle some of those requests. So I think that's it. I think that's so far in day two. That's where I am.
Do either one of you have any questions? I have one question, so you go ahead.
Ashley, in terms of the situation with the Department of Public Works, as well as our situation with the police department, where are we at in terms of keeping that moving?
Yeah, great question. Both Sam and Adam, and actually Chief Cobb, have met several times. They've met with Eversource probably the most. There is conflicting information from them. I think what Eversource was pretty excited and, you know, wanting to move forward with moving in easement, so there's an easement on that property. They have since backtracked on that. So both Sam and Adam are out next week on vacation. Chief and I have talked briefly about that. They've got to have some other conversations, so when Adam and Sam get back from vacation, we will pick up those meetings again and try to figure out where we are. I did ask them, though, to come to the next select board meeting to give an update. The hope there is that we'll get some additional information from Eversource in that time between them returning from vacation and the next select board meeting.
Yeah, I just, I'm of the opinion that anything we could do to move this along as quickly as possible so that next spring, we're ready to bring this before the voters, whatever.
Absolutely.
Requests are going to be.
Agreed.
But I just, I don't want to see us in a position where, you know, we've got Sam and his crew working out of construction trailers for four or five years.
Agreed.
So, okay, thank you.
Of course.
My question is about the asset management report status.
Yes.
And we had somebody asking the last meeting, we've had, I've had a few others along the way ask me about the status of that, so can you give us any kind of an update?
Yes, I can. It is my understanding, both from Adam and Sam, that they are working on that asset management report directly with Frank, and that we plan to publish that or make it available to the public by the end of July. So that's the timeline. If that timeline changes, we'll certainly let you know, but I don't envision that changing.
When did work on that commence?
February.
February.
Okay. Excellent. Any committee meetings, are you, I'm sorry, are you all done?
I'm good.
Okay. Any committee meetings and reports?
There was a Board of Fireworks meeting on June 23rd, and Kate Turcot has been appointed to that board. It was determined that in the future, the terms for the Fire Ward Committee will be three consecutive, three-year terms. There have been 440 calls per year to date that the fire department has responded to. The retired utility vehicle sold for $14,900, and that amount goes back into the general fund. The 2026 budget, which includes the additional firefighter, came in under budget. And the grants being applied for are a safer grant, grants for gear cleaner and combi tool, and gear extraction. Did I get that right? And there is enough in the capital reserve fund for air packs. Actually, they will be $60,000 less than needed, so they're replacing the air packs. Good? And then we also had a tri-town joint board meeting in Sunape. It was June 26. And the assessor noted that the, they have completed all review of new construction. There's been a 1% growth in each town, and they have not found a replacement for Joe yet. Two appeals to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals for New London, and there's one in Newberry, or a major one in Newberry with regard to Bly Hill. And that went to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, and they weren't satisfied, so they're going to the Superior Court. No town is being reevaluated in 2025, and they're going to wait and see where the growth is for 2026. The updates are being done frequently, but the revaluation has to be done every five years. Okay?
Okay. Excellent. You're gearing, you're going to start gearing up for Budget Committee next month, so.
We had an SB2 meeting today, so Colin Beasley, Debbie Stanley, and.
Laura Davis.
Laura Davis, thank you, have been meeting, this, today was the second meeting. What they have done is taken a look at the list of all towns in New Hampshire that are currently SB2 and divvied them up based on similar sizes to our town. And they have been, they've spent the past two weeks interviewing those towns to get their perspective. And they provided some updates today on those conversations. They are not finished yet, but that information will be published when the time is right.
Okay. All right. I didn't, I had a bike pedestrian meeting last week, but I missed it. So the minutes will be going up on the website for that one. And I also wanted to just call out one other thing back to the school funding issue, is that the two lawsuits now have just come out, the decisions have come out on school funding from the Supreme Court, the RAN decision. They voted that the excess swept funds that were being sent back by the towns is not unconstitutional, so good news for us, that we can keep that extra money that we have, that's not really extra, that does still go to the school district. And then the convale decision came down yesterday, saying that the state is underfunding and should be funding at that $7,300 level, but threw it back over the fence to the legislature to do what they need to do. So just that update. Do you have any other comments?
I'm sure that Concord's going to be all over addressing that post haste.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And just for the record, that is sarcasm.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 18?
I haven't read them.
Okay, we can put that off.
Can we put it off for the next time?
Yeah. All right. And then upcoming meetings. Next selectman meeting, July 23. Town offices will be closed on July 4th in observance of Independence Day. There's a rec commission meeting Monday, July 14, that I will attend. Zoning Board, Tuesday, July 15. Conservation Commission, Wednesday, July 16. Trustees of the Trust Fund, Monday, July 21. Board of Firewards, July 21. Planning Board, July 22. And that's it. And I'd like to, somebody made a comment that we end these meetings really quickly, so I just want to open it up one more time. If anybody else has any comments or would like to ask us any questions, we're going to be up here signing stuff, but please, anybody is welcome to do so. I don't want it to seem like we end this abruptly. So, go ahead, Cara.
Cara Leoni, one quick question, just for the benefit, I think Mag had asked earlier about facilities. We believe the bath houses are included in the assess, asset management. Is that correct? Correct. That my memory served me right? Yes. Okay, so it's part of a piece of, if we're looking at our next meeting looking forward, then I think it'd be important, that'd probably be one piece of it that we'd be waiting to hear about anyways. But just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
Yes, and Sam is working closely with Frank Anzalone to go building by building to understand his decision on those buildings. And so, yeah, those are included in that, and we'll get a final report in two weeks or so.
Awesome.
Three weeks.